Yes.
Okay, support on the main motion to approve the vote.
No.
Oh, yes, yes. We're doing your minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So, we are voting for the vote.
So, this is written?
I'm sorry, as written, yes.
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 Okay. We're moving on to audience participation. Would the clerk or the deputy clerk or whoever's going to read them read the rules for audience participation, please?
There shall be one agenda item for audience participation immediately following the approval of the minutes. Any person desires to speak, he or she must first be recognized by the mayor, then stand and speak, use her name and address. Individual person shall be allowed three minutes to address the council unless such a period of time is extended by a majority vote of the council. No member of the audience may speak more than once about the consent of a majority of the council present. No member of the audience may speak during any other part of the meeting without majority consent of the council present. Members of council may direct a question to a member of the audience after recognition by the chair and the person may give the answer. At the discretion of the chair, members of the audience addressing council shall come before the podium.
Okay. Mr. Scott, would you like to approach?
Thank you so much. Happy New Year to all who I have not had a chance to reach out, see, or ask around town as life goes on. I am David Scott. I live at 8610 Buffalo Drive, Commerce Township, Michigan. I am the supervisor of Commerce Township and I also am the president of the Michigan Airline Trail Group. I'm here today as I have reached out and thanked you to all of the council members that I was able to reach that took time to speak with me on these issues. I am disappointed. I, for the last five months roughly, I have had representatives from Walt Lake, the Honorable Mr. Alwazniak, the city manager Dennis Witt, Mayor Ackley, Councilman Costanza, come to the Michigan Airline Trail Consortium meeting with Wicksum, Commerce, but none of you have ever run into Representative Walt Lake. We've been without a representative of Walt Lake repeatedly, and last month I was promised by the mayor that a person would be appointed. Two months ago, I was told, "I'm almost ready there to appoint an individual." Three months ago, I was told, "The mayor's gonna do it." We have been unable to conduct business outside of those issues that are budgeted. We can't fix the Greenway drain without you being there to unanimously support us fixing the Greenway drain. We can't pay the bus engineering budget expense because you've never come to participate and assist us. We need you to participate. This is a multimillion-dollar endeavor. We have millions of dollars in donations and grants and commitments from all three communities. I'm asking only that you do your job to live up to that accommodation. We've been told that a person would be appointed. We were told that the budget would be presented for you to approve or deny. As it was approved in Wicksum, it was approved in Commerce. We're only asking that you, as a board, get to look at a budget so you can say, "Yes, we think we should continue to participate," and the money's coming out of the fund balance, not from a contribution from the citizens of Walt Lake or this board. We have a fund balance to operate from, but without your participation, we can't do that. We can't pay bills, we can't conduct business, and it's a joke. We have to step up to do what is our fiduciary responsibility to all three communities, to our commitment to Wicksum. Walt Lake and Commerce promised Wicksum we would not leave them hanging on the TAP grant. We would come through with our match grant monies. All three communities have had the opportunity and ability to go out and generate funds, generate donations, get a corporate donor to pick up your share. It's nothing that has to come out of your pocket. You could get that donated, that presented, or done. In addition, I've never stopped working. The depot, I have a group that wants to restore the depot at no cost to Commerce, no cost to Wicksum, and no cost to Walt Lake. The commitment is, they want to make it a Lakes Area Veterans Memorial. Part of that memorial would be specifically, and I quote, "No contribution from Walt Lake, Commerce, or Wicksum." You donors, and at the time, they have about $300,000 gathered. They didn't know if they wanted this in Commerce, they didn't know if they wanted it in Wolverine Lake. I truly believe the Walt Lake Depot is the place. We can show that the train depot was a passion for train. It took people from this city to war to protect its country. It brought their bodies home. It's the perfect site for a veterans memorial for the Lakes Area community. I need you to participate. I need you to amend the agenda to appoint an individual, to support a budget that costs no money from you, operating under the fund balance to continue this endeavor. Keep in mind, we go to bid next month to get this project done. Crosswalks, paving, done. The depot will be the reigning crown. The one lie that has been said, whether it's by accident or deliberate, I have to take the time to clarify. No money for the bridge, the non-motorized pedestrian bridge, no money from Walt Lake was spent on that bridge. No money from Wicksum was spent on that bridge. MDOT supplied $3.2 million for a bridge. If it came in under budget, none of that money was coming east or west. That was only bridge money. The additional money that was done to that bridge for the lighting, the amenities, all of which are not done yet, they violated contract and have not completed it, was paid for by Commerce Township. Anybody who says Commerce Township got more for the bridge and didn't leave money over for the depot is lying. That is not how it occurred. With that, I would only implore you disregard, if not deny, the motion to take money away from the trail, committed to Wicksum certified funds in the TAP grant match money, and to throw out the addition to withdraw from the airline trail. We have money to continue, you don't have to contribute. It would be silly to walk away. We're at the finish line. The icing on the cake, of course, will be the lights and things on the bridge that are nowhere near being done, and it will be a veterans memorial with a restored depot to be used as a business. State parks take consignment to allow a bike rental or someone else, something that doesn't compete with an adjacent business, to operate. We can make money using that facility to support the community, to support the residents, and encourage the transients to come here as a parking spot. We've developed a trailhead at the Shearwater Complex. American Plastic Toys has committed a trailhead there. We have industrial head beating the depot, and then there are other potential sites further down the road. The most important ones are, we have the ability to support the citizens, the commitment that some of you have been here since the beginning. I have not. But I can tell you unequivocally, this is a win-win for the community. Nowhere will we get the millions and millions of dollars that we have been committed from Ralph Wilson, you know, Junior Foundation, the State of Michigan, the Department of Natural Resources, or even people like Michael Levine, an independent millionaire who reached into his pocket and said, "All I want to do is pay for your design and engineering costs with one caveat, that I can ride across the trail in August of 2019 to celebrate my birthday. I don't want to have to pay them back. I don't want to get sued because I didn't honor that minor commitment." And I don't want to leave the city of Wicksum hanging because we, we being Walt Lake, Wicksum, and Commerce, we agreed we would get this TAP grant, we would accept the TAP grant, and we would provide our match grant. Commerce is $686,000. Please honor these agreements, please keep this going. And please understand, though, I'll be the first to tell you, if I ride a bike, Mrs. Scott says I look like a guy with a suspended driver's license. I'm not a runner, I'm not a jogger. The trail is an asset, it will bring business to this town. And I'll extend one last thing. As a good neighbor, as I always have, if you need money to help match that grant for some reason, shape, or form, and there's something I don't know about, I'm here. Thank you for your time.
Lady on the right halfway back?
Hi, my name is Diane Chrome, and I'd like to tell you where I live, 139 Wild Bear Boulevard, Walt Lake.
Can you put the light down just a little bit so you're speaking into the mic? Thank you.
How's that? I just wanted to share with the council something because I had read it in the final column. And what I had read in the final column was per the vote about the funding for the, for the trail, that it was voted down because the citizens of Walt Lake did not want this. I want to share with you, I voted against this, but I want that trail. I voted against it because there was a caveat in writing that the money could be used not only for the trail, but for whatever the city of Walt Lake wanted. In my own personal budgets, when I do funds, I don't touch the pots. The pots do not intermingle. If I'm going to pay extra money, because I pay healthy taxes here, if I'm going to pay extra money, and I would have, I want it to go directly to that trail. I want that trail. I think it's a win for Walt Lake. I think it's, I am an avid cyclist. My husband is an avid cyclist. I want a safe place to cycle. I want a safe place for the children of Walt Lake to cycle. I want a safe place for us to walk because we are becoming more and more congested. And this is a non-congested. It connects us to all the other communities, and our businesses are on that trail. And people stop, we're bikers, we stop, we utilize those restaurants, we utilize those shops. We're always looking at little towns on any trail. When we take the Pancree Trail, we're going off that trail, we're going off that, we're gonna look in those cities, we're gonna stop in those cities. So what I wanted to share with you is, when you're going to put something on the ballot for a tax or something, it has to go, I feel, directly to that area and nowhere else. Because what you're basically saying is what I'm now reading in new business under Proposal One, is to take $420,000 and reallocating it from the trail fund and giving it somewhere else. Whether needed or not, there are other creative ways to fund our infrastructure. And believe me, I've talked to other communities like Farmington, and we go, we have communities up north, and they look for creative solutions, why can't we? I'm a firm supporter for this trail, and I just want you very aware that I didn't vote for it because of that caveat. And if you're going to ask for any kind of tax increase, that money has to go for exactly that, and that is all I need.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Hello, I'm Darlene Sianta. I live at 1717 East Stand in Walt Lake. And I'm really disheartened at the fact that we went through this, it was approved, it was budgeted for the trailway, $420,000 last summer, and now we're back again to pull the money out. And we're gonna face lawsuits from the state, from our sister cities, and we're gonna be court ordered to pay attorney fees back to our sister cities, back to MDOT, to the State of Michigan. And this is gonna leave a terrible blemish on Walt Lake. That if we just had committed to and honored our agreement and what we had agreed to do to begin with, we wouldn't be going to court. But I, I bet you, because I'm an insurance expert, I know that these people, these good people in Commerce and Wicksum and the State of Michigan, that all put their necks out on the line for this trailway, they're not gonna leave Walt Lake out there saying, "We got off scot-free, we didn't have to put a dime into this trail." They finished it up all on their own. And look at the benefit we get from this. I, I think it's delusional to think like that. And this city takes in $10 million a year. You've gotta have the money coming from somewhere. I mean, you've got the money. How are you spending it? And if you're gonna take $420,000 from the trailway, you've got a city manager that's earning $160,000 a year guaranteed, contract through 2023. You're gonna take the money from the trailway and not pay your obligations? Take the money from the city manager. Don't pay that obligation and pay for the infrastructure in Walt Lake. Your money is better spent doing that.
I see a hand in the back.
John Barado, 1159 Wabaso. I've lived in this community for 30 years. And guess what Walt Lake looks like today, like it did 30 years ago? The only change is the City Hall complex. It looks beautiful, but it's not something we needed. We really don't need a city manager who's over here 10 hours a week. I'll be honest with you, I've seen it myself. It's time to call a spade a spade. Make too much money for doing nothing. It's the truth. We're being fleeced. Do your jobs. Make a change. Turn a page. It's time.
It's time to clap for everyone, please. Let everyone have time to speak, or we'll be here all evening. Did I see a hand there on? Okay, over there, yeah.
I'm Jennifer Mace, I'm in 919 Bluffton. I'm for the bike trail, as everybody else. I think this is kind of embarrassing that you guys, you know, we went through all this stuff and then you're backing out. I agree with them, you're gonna have a lot of problems down the line. And I think this whole problem is that you guys are not looking to the future. This is a future thing, this is why we moved here. We live, I lived in Novi, and I pay lower taxes for way better bike trails, they're building a big park there, all that stuff. So we pay way higher taxes than Novi, we're, for what? The, let's see. I want to know what you're gonna do for the Walt Lake, the building they tore down. What's the plan there? I mean, I'd like to see a plan, and I'd like you to work on it. Let's do restaurants, we need some restaurants, we need condos on the top. You're not gonna get the people in here unless you plan for it. And there's no planning, like, you need to get the younger people in here, the people that want a bike, the people that want to use this stuff, you know? Because I have kids, you know, we would love to do that. And this, you know, taking this out, I mean, you have a, you have a, on the thing, a segue for the police, how about a bike? You know, I mean, they, they need to do that, maybe then they need to work on the bike trails a little bit. I also, one of the things, in the water, I noticed like in Arvita, is there a ruling about when you have to take stuff out? Is there, are you doing something about, because there's like a bunch of stakes in there? Yeah. And they, they're gonna get sheared off, they're gonna sue the city if, if somebody runs into them or hurts, you know, breaks their boat. So I think that there should be, oh, sorry, something about that. I don't know. I, I know that docs have been left out. That's it. I think that's it.
Okay, thank you. Who's next, please? Yes.
Hi, everybody, I'm John Nessler, I'm the Michigan Airline Trail Manager. I live in Warlock. I wanted to quickly ask for approval of the budget that Congressman, Congressman Councilman Chris Stanzo put on the, on the agenda. That's key to our, our operations. And if we get that budget approved, we can get that boss invoice paid tomorrow, we can get the Greenway drain out that way, we can get that repaired going tomorrow. We already have a vendor ready to go, we have the low bid, we're working with the Water Resources Commission that's ready to go. But we need to have that budget approved so that we can, we can do it, that's the way that our interlocal agreement is set up, the operation of the trail council. I want to take a quick minute to, to read a little bit of a statement from Bob Wilson. Bob Wilson is the director of the Michigan Trails and Greenways Alliance. He wanted to be here tonight, but he's actually teaching tonight. And I'm just gonna read a little bit of what he said. "My name is Bob Wilson, and I am the executive director of the Michigan Trails and Greenway Alliance. Michigan Trails is the statewide voice for all non-motorized trail groups in Michigan. We advocate for public, for policy and funding for trail building in Michigan, and our principal current project is completing the Great Lake to Lake Trail Route 1, which will link eight, link eight counties and numerous municipalities like yours to create a destination trail that will drive local economies and improve the quality of life for residents and users along the trail. I understand that the city of Walt Lake is proposing to rescind a very significant $420,000 commitment to fund the grant that has been certified by the TAP grant applicant of the city of Wicksum. This trail work is an essential link in the 315-mile-long Great Lake to Lake Trail Route 1 that is due to open later this summer, and we are extremely concerned that the failure on our commitment will result in substantial detriment to businesses, organizations, trail managers, and hundreds of trail users from South Haven to Port Huron that have taken steps to plan for the opening of the trail. I understand the project has been advertised through the MDOT Local Agents program, and we're looking forward to the commencement of the construction phase. As we've just recently, we've completed our fourth Great Lake to Lake study. We, I can tell you firsthand that the enthusiasm and support for the trail and the inaugural ride this fall couldn't be better, and that our riders and other users can't wait to visit the numerous communities along the route. As we are making progress towards completing the Great Lake to Lake Trail Route 1, which will run right back out here, it is critical that all communities and trail segments along the route continue to maintain their support for these key trail projects. I know you understand the impact that trails can and do have on building strong communities and linking the divides that sometimes can cause separation. It is my sincere hope that you will honor the very public commitment you have made to the people and businesses of this region and stand behind the original decision you have made to support the trail with the $420,000 commitment. Totally acknowledge what he's saying, and I thank you for your time."
May I ask him a question? Generally, we don't do that during audience participation, so, no, this, this, this is time for the people to clap. Who's next? Gentlemen, yeah.
My name is Mike Rutter. Live in West Bloomfield, I have a business here at 14 Hagerty, American Cyclone Fitness, and I'm president of that company. Dave, you would look good on a bike, trust me. Especially on that trail. So, we've been in business 25 years, and we've been servicing the local community, both Wicksum, Walt Lake, Commerce, West Bloomfield, Novi. Probably the, the single, you know, most common question that we get that our customers ask, many that are here, is where can we safely ride? And all these years, I've always been waiting for the trail to come up, and now that the trail is this close, really the answer to the question is, just ride up to the trail, and you can go 50 miles in any direction and safely. If we don't have that gap filled, then it's gonna be hard to say that. As a local business, one of the other commitments that I make, that I've already made for the depot coming up here, American Cyclone Fitness will donate a bicycle repair stand. People that are coming, you know, east or west, they can stop if they need air in their tires, if they need repairs or something like that. You know, we're happy to do that, we're always doing, you know, things for the community, and we will continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone? Yeah. I'm sorry, the podium was in the way, man, sorry about that.
Hi, I'm Natalie Boylan at 761 Walt Lake Drive. If I might, I'd like to first ask how many of you have ridden the trail that starts at Hagerty Road and goes towards Orchard Lake? Okay, so, maybe, maybe half. So you have seen the enjoyment, you've gotten the enjoyment out of it, okay? This is a big thing to us. We used to live in Dearborn, we'd hop on Heinz Drive, and we built a minus. And we are pretty avid bike riders. But around here, my husband and I now hop on Anya Trail, go with the traffic, it's not safe. And I, I just, I want you to realize and remember how much fun it was to ride that trail, to ride that trail, and kind of get a picture of how, if you were there, you saw how many people were using that trail. I mean, it was busy. And people would go to Orchard Lake, the stores at Orchard Lake, they'd stop there for a snack or something, they'd continue on or come back, and it's just a beautiful I wondered how many grant applications we have sent out to see if we can get money, or what, what is the process? Is there a committee that's been trying to get money or anything like that? One thing I have a real big problem with, which Dave brought up at the beginning, is I'm up here talking, and this communication is really hard because we're not getting any feedback. You know, we're up here talking, and, and you guys are not giving us any feedback at all. So I might say something, but if you have something that is important for me to know or anybody else to know, I don't know. And so then we get down to the end where you're gonna start talking about all this, and we can't talk. And I understand it used to be that we talked at the end, which makes a lot more sense to me, because now we know where you're coming from, and, and we can kind of have a communication because that's what communication is, feedback. And I'm not getting any feedback, I'm getting a lot of blank faces other than the hand at the beginning. Okay, so I just, I, I wish that you could change that, and for future meetings, have our communication at the end or something like that, so we can address what you've been talking about. We don't know. We were at a couple of meetings ago, and there was supposed to be a meeting addressing this, and I said, "Well, make sure we know about it." I don't know if there was a meeting or what, but I never heard about it. So we're kind of in the, in the dark as far as what's going on. One thing, just a personal thing I wanted to touch on, we're, we're pretty avid bike riders, my husband would not be here today if we weren't avid bike riders. He was dead for a half hour. They did CPR on him, they used the paddles for a half hour. So this is gonna benefit people, whether you are avid or whether you're just out there enjoying. You are gonna benefit from this. The community's gonna benefit from this, so.
Thank you. And I, and I will say that your comments after the vote are not going to tell us what your feelings are. We are here to listen to your comments before any action is taken. We wait until after the action, your comments.
But some of us don't know what has transpired, like, is there a committee for funding? Is there, you know, we don't really know that.
Okay, so anyone else? Yes?
Jeff's at 420 Wellsboro Street here in Walt Lake. In advance of the meeting next week on the tri subdivision, I was here for the public hearing we had, the initial one. And my concern as a businessperson and an expert in, in business is that I'm aware of multiple companies here in the United States that operate as a business, and what they do, and they go in and they buy city water rights, they go in and they find the most damaged section of the water sections, they repair it, and they keep the water rates the same. Then they start bringing in lots and lots of cash. In this proposal to repair the tri subdivision where you're planning to charge the residents to repair the streets, okay? I'm thinking, the way, the way, here's what I want you to prove to me, I want you to tell me by next week's meeting what the ratio is of water, not the cost, but for every gallon of water that comes into the city and doesn't leave the city on the other side, how much of it actually gets charged back to the residents? In other words, if we're not at 1.25 to 1, we should either be funding the street repairs or we should be dramatically lowering everybody's water bill. Because if not, and you repair the tri sub and you charge the tri sub, you need to be aware that you're gonna, if you don't know it now, you're gonna be sitting on a pot of cash anywhere from, I'd say, $50,000 to $250,000 a year in excess revenue. a pot of cash anywhere from, I'd say $50,000 to $250,000 a year in excess revenue. Because if you've ever had a pressurized pipe in your house or your garden hose, and it's pressurized, and you suddenly get a leak in it, you know, even a leaky faucet, a small drip and leak, will generate four gallons of water a day. So the tri subdivision is losing a massive amount of water, which the city is recouping with higher rates. If you don't lower the rates to match the repairs to the tri sub, and you turn around and charge the tri sub for water, for street repairs on top of it, I'm looking going, that to me is not, it's not dishonest, but it's dishonorable. Because you'll be sitting on a pot of cash that will be coming in every single year. And if you don't use it to lower our water bills or to fix those streets and not charge the residents, that's an action that, you know, I, I'd like to know the ratio, because that's going to tell me just exactly how much revenue the city's going to be sitting on once they repair the tri subdivision. Thanks.
Is there anyone else? Yes, gentleman in the back.
I was pointing to him.
What? I have a gentleman in the back.
I was pointing to him.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
Go ahead. I didn't even see you there.
That's all right. I slipped a finger blind spot there. I apologize. Just a couple of things I want to mention. I'm Steve Brown, this is Wixom City Manager, resident of Parkington Hills. Couple of things I just want to talk about and flesh out some of the information that David Scott mentioned in relation to the commitment that Wixom made on the certification of the TAP grant funding. Essentially, just for people that are here that might not fully get some of those details, one of the agencies had to step forward and be the lead agency, the recipient agency, on, on the monies that were coming through the TAP grant. Commerce was ineligible. That was either Walt Lake or the city of Wixom, it's two cities involved. So Wixom had stepped forward to do that. So as part of that process, when we certified those TAP grant funds for that $2.15 million grant, we had to represent that we were going to step forward and make the funds available, and had the funds available to do the project, essentially including the local match that is required and had been committed to for the cities of Walt Lake, Wixom, and for Commerce Township. So when we stepped up to the plate and did that, we did that on the basis of representations from our, our partners on the Trailway Council, including the city of Walt Lake for their $420,000. That's been committed two or three different times with the commitment to the TAP grant, with the budgeting process that you went through, and then through a cost participation agreement. So on the basis of those kinds of representations, we stepped forward and said, we'll, we'll make good on these funds, we'll advance the funds, and we'll get reimbursed. And that's what was called for in the cost participation agreement. So I'm asking the city of Walt Lake to, to live up to that commitment there. I discourage you from opting out of the Trailway Council, and, and I want to see you continue with the trail, because it's something that I think is very important to the state, it's very important to the region, I think will be very important to the city of Walt Lake. We have an opportunity to create a first-class trail, and we have an opportunity, opportunity to do that on these 5.3 miles of trail that we have, utilizing other sources of money to the, to the greatest extent that I could have ever imagined. You know, the $2.15 million come from the TAP grant, $1.3 million from the Ralph C. Wilson Junior Foundation, the state again stepping up the plate at about $3.2 million, I believe, on the bridge. So these funding sources provide the lion's share of the cost, and for some, for pennies on the dollar for our local communities, we can have a first-class resource developed and make it part of this Great Lake to Lake Trail that is going to cross from, from the west to the east side of the state. And that's something I think that we will all be proud of, and I think we'll all benefit from, and I encourage you to, to rethink the decisions that you have before you, if you've already thought differently. But I would like to see you continue to be part of the Trailway Council. I would like to see you continue to meet that commitment that you made to the city of Wixom and to Commerce Township as part of the Trailway Council to fund those dollars on your part for the $420,000. And, and the last thing I'm going to talk about is, is I've been in public administration, government administration for, what is it? It's about 28 years. And this is one of the proudest moments of my career, frankly, the quick progress that we've made, and I'll be brief, Mayor. The quick progress that we've made since I've started just in the last two years is amazing. We have three communities involved. And I'm, I'm hoping and praying that we're not going to take a big step backward today with decisions that could be made here at the Walt Lake City Council. And I hope that you stay the course, and I hope to honor the commitments that you made to us, and to the, to the trail, and to the greater good of your community and the people that reside here, and will enjoy it. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Appreciate you, Jesse.
Is there anyone else in your line who would like to speak? Yeah. If a gentleman in the, okay, now you're pointing to the front. Okay, this is Steve Atwell.
I'm Steve Atwell, owner of Iron Industries at 902 North Pontiac Trail. I personally have ridden this trail from my home in Rochester to Walt Lake. And I don't oppose the trail. I oppose the way the trail came about and what you're going to build here. I've ridden it, I ride, I ride the Patriot Trail, my wife and I are avid bikers. I've ridden in Rochester, Bluefield, Comer, all of them, not Comer, but Union Lake, wherever the trail comes, all the way through here, and on the best part of the state. It's not paved. It's not a Cadillac with a trail. It's a very nicely done trail, with brush round, gravel, and road worthy, taken care of, but not paved. The expense that comes out of the paving, to me, is the problem. I mean, I'm not the, I'm probably the only person here that agrees with you guys in, in some way. I like the trail, and it's trail important, and it's nice to the state, but we could do it more economically. We don't need to pay, we don't need to have the five point, we have Commerce here and Wixom here, and they just say proud of this jewel of a trail they're going to build, and no one else, the other communities around have it. So they're going to drive, they're going to ride their bikes, through Bluefield Township from Rochester, on gravel, nicely done, easy to maintain, better, I think better for the ecology, and then hit pavement for five miles, and after the five miles, not hit pavement anymore. It's not the trail. This will make him, Bob, be done, and the way it's going to be put together. So that's just my opinion.
Thank you. Now, thank you.
Hey, Mayor. How's this city manager? I'm Gabriel Chung. I'm one of the newer folks here. I'm Vice Chair of the Wixom Town Development Authority. I actually don't have very much to say, because everyone here said it in way better terms than any of us, at least in Wixom, could ever say. Thank you so much, everybody. I was absolutely blown away by the passion that was exhibited here. Something that I've been very passionate about is in my own personal practice and conversations with all of you, and then in my private conversations elsewhere, when I talk about local government, I've always put Walt Lake up in my own conversations as a paragon of zealous stewards of their community. What you do here and the attitude that you exhibit, I've seen you vote down measures that the voters didn't ask for, all that kind of stuff, it's really blown me away. And there's no reason that you would do that other than just a steadfast commitment to looking out for other people, the people that trust you. And I know, at least for the sister communities of Commerce and Wixom, we trust each other in this. We just ask that you follow those commitments through. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else on any subject? Yes, sir.
I'm Rob Smith, 1779 Swain. Just a quick comment. You had mentioned that you have this before you do your votes, and you can hear what we have to say.
Right.
It should be a unanimous decision.
Okay.
Hello. John Smith, Great Lakes Segway, here in Walt Lake. And I know it's an agenda item way down the list here, but I, I wanted to just introduce myself and let everybody know why we've been talking with the police and the city manager about having a Segway as part of the, the fleet of vehicles. And I located my business here locally in Walt Lake because I saw something exciting. We have a, a beautiful beach. We are located near the beach, and the opportunity is to, to help bring some, some really fun amenities and exciting things to the downtown. And as part of that business, I have reached out to the police chief and the city manager and a few others, and expressed my excitement and how we might be able to partner together. We've been working with a variety of police departments around the state, and, excuse me, in fact, we're the only dealership in the state. And I decided to, to entrust Walt Lake and the residents to bring fun tours and excitement. And with the, the police Segway, that opportunity is to help police not only patrol, but to, to give them a, an enhanced mobility, to, to visibility for, for some of the events and festivals, and then with the trail itself, to allow for a quicker response on the trails. And if you know a lot of different vehicles, like a Gator or what have you, they don't compare to the, the efficiency and speed of a Segway that can get and, and help in, in search and rescue opportunities and, and ways to, to, to help if in need there was an emergency event on the trail itself. And we're not suggesting replacing exercise or, or bicycles or anything like that, but just enhance personal mobility. It's a hot topic around our, our city, our state, and our, and our country. So just thank you for your time. I appreciate the opportunity to be on the proposal. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else that's here on this topic today? Anyone? Twice? No hands? Okay.
Mayor, I thought we had some folks here from, who want to speak on the garage.
I thought we had some on the garage. Is there anyone on the garage sale? Because you will not be speaking during Ms. Hewitt's presentation. That's why I keep saying, if you have any subject. Okay.
Good evening. I'm Bill McCliss. I live at 1184 Walt Lake, or 1184 North Eddy in Walt Lake. I read the article that I suppose has started all this in regards to garage sales. I guess my basic statement would be, the complaint seems to be that it is an unfair rule and that it is not a rule in other surrounding communities. The problem is that that problem did not occur in other communities. This rule came about after years of wrangling in a neighborhood, difficulties, police involved in numerous occasions. The rule was written to create peace. I don't believe that the rule is unnecessarily restrictive in any means for a garage sale. I would hate to see my neighborhood go back to the street being blocked up, unable to go through my own street every weekend again. We did that for years. It was very difficult. I'm glad the rule exists. It's helped tremendously. I do appreciate your time, and I hope that you do vote down a change in that ruling in the state. Thank you.
Gentlemen on the way.
Mayor, Council? My name is Randy Seabora. I live at 1145 North Eddy. I have been here for 30 years. I had that same residence. I was originally complaining when it started 25, 28 years ago, very unsafe. I have a lawn sprinkler. These people park on your grass, they come into your driveway, she puts signs in my yards. I tell her not to. We have a park that's out there, a lot of traffic, kids now, bikes, dog walkers. There's a customer that does these subs, he knows how safe our neighborhood, how clean it is. You guys, you know, you help it clean for us, throwing out landscapers, auto shop across the street for me, masons. I bought here, it's residential. It's not a place to start a business. I wanted that, I moved downtown and been on Pontiac Trail. I went and took a survey off the internet. Everybody around us, South Line, Millford, South Line, Bloomfield Township, Wixom, West Bloom, Novi, they all have them. I got them right here. And guess what? Wixom's the toughest one. You ever see there's no sign entirely. Two days only. Don't change anything. I think you should readjust our codes to protect the citizens in safety. The manager talked, he's right. You can't get through that street sometimes. They park up, some on the road, some off. But I would be very adamant that you guys do not change, and if you do, it may be for us, the citizen, to keep us safe. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Yes. See your hands there.
My name is Carol McCann. I live at 135 Windin Brook in Commerce Township. I'm here on behalf of Oscar Leeser and his wife, Pat. They were a neighbor of Denise Hewitt. She drove those people crazy. Garage sales constantly, advertising this estate jewelry that she has, which most of the stuff, the stuff that she makes. I'm very nervous and upset. Several years ago, I think it was Mayor Roberts, they had a big meeting, I think almost everybody up in the Quintus Sub was there, due to this. Oscar and Pat, Oscar lived in Walt Lake over 90 years. He just passed away. His wife passed away a few months later. Denise drove them crazy. I mean, crazy. The last thing she said to Oscar was, "Why don't you die, you old bastard?" That's the type of person she is. I feel sorry for her new neighbor. Pat and Oscar lost a daughter just before, I think, Denise moved in. This should not be changed. I don't live there anymore, but I used to live in the same house that Denise lives in. I was a friend of Pat and Oscar since 1956. They were wonderful people. She treated them like trash. She should not be allowed to have any more garage sales. If she has a lot of stuff to sell, she's a single person living in that house. If she has all this stuff to make these garage sales every weekend, then she should get a business going and rent a store someplace. Thank you.
Thank you. You already spoke.
Got another issue.
Different subject, come on up. Long as you're on another subject.
Jeff Rondo, 1127 Wabaso. What she said, I don't know any better way to put it. I mean, there's no reason that he should be considered for this. I mean, I was the ordinance officer at the time. Everybody in the office spent weeks and hours and days playing this game. It's insane. There's no reason that she should run a business out of her residential home. There's no reason for it. I mean, she calls it, it's a continual estate sale. And when she was building a garage there, I went out there and inspected under the garage, and she flat out told me she's building the garage to run her business. I told her, you cannot run a business here. You know, the reality of it is, is even when we instituted the ordinance because we needed to because of Denise's business, I was out there three, four times a week continually. It's not news to anybody. And when it was three signs, she put up six. And when I take down three, she put up five more. I mean, it's insane. The rules mean absolutely nothing to Ms. Hewitt. Thank you.
Tommy, you'll have three minutes, and you will not be speaking during Denise's hearing. Okay.
Hi, Tommy Devine. This is other half of 11149 North Eddy. I'm a United States veteran, was in the service, it's within our freedoms, our simple freedoms of, if you want the freedom of speech, if you want free enterprise, simple things like that. Denise, these things are saying about her are not true. First of all, she's not running a business out of her house. She's a professional model, and I know her better than anybody. She's gone most of the year, most of the year. She's doing trade shows all over the country. She comes in once in a while, she cleans out her house, she wants to get rid of a little bit of junk. She won't have to worry, it's raining, I'm going to get rained out, is the, is the, is I got a, I'm going to sign in the wrong place, I'm going to get the ticket. I mean, it's our simple freedoms to clean your house up. Your clutter, and with Oscar, she was a good neighbor to him. The guy had a dip, something dipped it together. I, I took care of Oscar's insurance for him. For some reason, he had, he got a brunt against Denise, and, and I just can't understand why he had all these other neighbors to, to, to cut, to cut her the way she, she, they're doing. She's a, she's a good person, she loves her neighbors, she's cookies out to them, she's, you know, and it's just our simple freedoms of, of free enterprise, you know, you have some junk, you get rid of it. She's not running a business out of her house. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
My name's Thornamore. I live at 1171 North Eddy. I want to say as a young mom of a growing family, I love garage sales. They're wonderful. I love buying things at a deal. I love buying things at a deal, fixing them up and enjoy them profusely. But there needs to be a balance and it's looking around the communities. The council made a wise decision to permit three and have days in between. It's really on par with our neighboring communities that allow between two and four in a twelve month period. I think it allows people that want garage sales to still have them, but protects those that could be concerned about the extra traffic and parking and strangers that come through our neighborhoods and wear and tear on our roads and our infrastructure. So I just hope you know we enjoy this ordinance and that if you would keep it as is, that would make my family and people I know very happy. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else? Anyone else on the garage sale? Anyone else on the trail? Anything else we have? Yes.
Excuse me. Hi, I am Kyler Pillnick, resident of fourteen twenty-eight North Pontiac Trail. I've lived in this community as a homeowner for one year. One thing I do have to say is we live fairly close within eyesight of where the garage sales would be. I think that for how frequently they are, I do not know how much history is on the subject, but for how much they would be frequently throughout the year, how many garage sales there would be, that all of our surrounding communities have very identical requirements, I guess you would say. Seems to be about three per year. Yeah, I'm not sure entirely the history of it, but I believe that is a proper balance. If you want to do more than that, then you should be running a business. Thank you.
Denise, is there anyone else? Anyone? I want to make sure I get everybody. Don't want to miss any hands on any subject. Okay. Everybody done? All righty. Okay, audience participation is closed. We have total report. Is there any council member that has a report that they'd like to make tonight?
Yes, this, uh, this, my, my council report actually will go back to some of the speakers that spoke earlier. Help set some light on exactly what has transpired over the last six months.
Okay, ma'am. A council report is something that you're reporting a committee that you're on or something like that. If you want to make council comments, then you make them during council comments.
I, I attended the trailer report and I'd like to report on that.
You're not the trail representative.
I am not the trail representative. I'm a city council member and I think it's directly to the members.
Does the council have a problem with the reports going?
Yes, they do.
To me, council report is a report with a committee that you're on.
We, we've allowed council members. Matter of fact, we've allowed council members to speak in council report that have not served on committees as recently as the October meeting. So I'm, I'm asking to be afforded the same opportunity and right to speak about the trailway council meeting that I attended last month.
Any other objections to it?
Mayor, I'd like him to report. I believe that you ought to report that he apologized for me not being at the meeting last night. I'd like to hear that. I'd like to comment like that.
Okay, go ahead.
So I did attend the trailer, trailer council meeting last month as I've done for the past two years. Wall Lake, as was pointed out by two of our speakers earlier, we did not have our designated vote, voting member to the trailer council was not present at the December trailer meeting. Unfortunately, this was the third month in a row, October, November, December, that we did not have a designated voting member present at the meeting. In addition to that, our representative left in the middle of the July meeting. In August, we did not have a member present. So we've only had a member present in one meeting in the past six months, which was the September meeting. Certain procedures of the trailway council have not been able to complete at the trailer meeting per the, per the interlocal agreement. The agreement requires that all three communities be presented to vote on certain items, including in part improving expenditures to the trailway in advance as well as payments using the trailway ones for expenses. Not having a member present has greatly inhibited the trailway to conduct its business and almost shed the light in the city that we've been not in good faith working with the, our partners in our two communities. And I, I think it's important to shed some backlight on some of the general items we're getting ready to vote on of what our participation has been in the program for the past six months. That is all I have.
Okay. Madam Mayor, I'm the trail representative that he was talking about. May I respond?
Yes, I was just, would like to make a comment though, if I may, before you, you make yours. I was at the last trail meeting. It's funny how some items were voted on because the attorney said it was okay to vote on certain items, but it wasn't okay to vote on other items. So for some expenditures, two votes was okay. We didn't need the third. But to pay loss engineering from Wall Lake, we needed the third vote, even though the money was there to pay. So it was whoever the attorney wanted to pay in his opinion, and that's who was voted. Okay. So yes, Mr. City Manager?
First of all, I am, have been a, a trail representative, either representative or the alternate, a voting member, depending on who goes. Uh, the, let's start with the beginning. The beginning, when I came here, I sat in the early meetings, I've been here eight and a half years, the early meetings, there was no cost to the taxpayers for any of this. But the primary reason for the trail joining that was to rebuild the depot. That's why Wall Lake was in, the rehabilitation of the depot and to do the trail. That has never changed. That's not changed now. It's not changed the objective of any council members I speak with. There's going to be a trail. There's going to be a rehabilitation of the depot. The issue is the management of it from the very beginning. I sat there for years and the Wall Lake representative and the alternate were there when it was determined that they hadn't done a budget for years. And it was the Wixom city manager who called them out, not Steve Brown, but the prior city manager and a response from the wizards of finance were, well, we've been going by the seat of our pants. They've not done it according to the agreement that everybody cites. They have not done an audit in the whole time since two thousand nine. There's no audit of expenditures. My vote, by not showing up, didn't stop them from doing business. We all know that they did do business. Indeed, my not showing up is a no vote. He mentioned I left a meeting. Did he tell you why? No, he did not. He was in attendance and I was attacked. The city council was called, they were accused of crimes for not supporting what they wanted, essentially extortion, which is a crime. And it got so bad that I walked out. Mr. Costanzo was present as a councilman, but he didn't take the, the defense of the city council or the citizens of Wall Lake. The meeting was out of control. It was run by Mr. Scott. He didn't stop it. He didn't apologize. Yes, I walked out. I went to the next meeting and I get the same kind of nonsense. My vote was a no vote. It didn't stop them from doing business because they did business. You folks were there and there was somebody there all the time knowing what they're doing. I know that this council is going to have a trail. They will always have a trail. We've got a trail. The interlocal agreement says anybody who pulls out is still got the trail. We have responsibility now. The documents show clearly that we made a commitment to work with them, but they're required to read all the documents. There's no contractual obligation. There's, there was a lady in the audience who said it was budgeted. That's a misstatement of fact. We previously budgeted, that fell to fund balance and is not budgeted at all. And the discussion about where the money should go and whether that four hundred and twenty thousand and additional would go to, would go to fund the tri-a improvements or upgrades, that's a, that's a valid discussion. They've all known that. When we had the discussion over there that Councilman Costanzo was at, and so was the supervisor Scott, who stood up and said, "It's putting lipstick on a pig." They want Wall Lake to buy lipstick. Wall Lake has got nothing. They said they would work with us and put more equitable distribution of the cost. That has not happened. They didn't bring it to the table. Wall Lake is paying an unfair share and we're still getting nothing. There's nothing in any of this except the, the empty promises that have been going on all the way back, that the depot was going to get funded. I pay taxes in Michigan and I'm kind of offended when they say that my taxes didn't pay for the bridge. My taxes paid for the bridge. They, they will cite you that they got a grant. They did. You can get a ten dollar gift certificate from Target. That doesn't pay the cost. Wall Lake is on the hook. This all gets done without a renegotiation of this whole thing. Either one of those committees, the communities can pull out and Wall Lake is holding the bag for rehabilitation of the depot. I also take offense that they now want to decide to make a memorial for the veterans. I'm a veteran. I don't think either one of them are. I'm a veteran and it offends me that now they use the veterans memorial to try to defer the discussion about why Wall Lake is not getting the depot rehabilitated. This council can take action tonight. If you're, if you vote to stay in, we're in, but we're still not going to have a trail that, that includes our depot rehabilitated. We're going to have beautiful bridge. We're going to have a beautiful park down in Wixom, but you as a taxpayer and all those people are going to be on the hook for rehabilitation. Those are empty promises that I've heard for eight and a half years. If you run the trail yourself, I guarantee you that the parks and recreation division can give better recommendation, better management than we had since two thousand nine. I don't really want to, to, to call out the new manager. He's brand new on the spot, even the new supervisor. I've been here from the beginning. I've heard the empty promises. That's not going to fund this if you, if you don't deal with this and if they don't come to the table and renegotiate, it's an unfair share. They have a bigger tax base. They have bigger budgets, but we're paying less than even Wixom. You vote the way you want, but I've done my job. I put it on the table. We're having this discussion. These people are going to be paying an unfair share if you don't change. He called this out. I wasn't going to say anything, but he tried to make me, my role here is to protect the tax dollars of the taxpayer. They personalize it. They make it like it's evil to call this out. You do not have an audit for all the money that's spent in the trail business all the way back to two thousand nine. He calls out my audit, which said we saved a million bucks and wants to imply that the city's audit somehow was over a line. Call it like it is. We've done a good job. The people are going to know tonight. Some of those people have been told there wasn't going to be a trail. That's absolute nonsense. It's going to be a trail no matter how this happens. There's going to be a trail and if we keep the four hundred, you can either put it over there, you can buy that pumper truck that we can't buy, or you can rehab the depot. But we're going to have a trail. We're going to have a trail. We can't get out of the trail. The interlocal agreement is very clear. We've got a trail. So already done. It's a question of that Cadillac that one of the people said. Do you want to spend that kind of money? We can do it just like West Bloomfield. They manage their own trail. They, they did a really good job of the way they packaged it and that's the model you ought to be looking for. Unless they make an adjustment here. We, you're not on the line, the lawyer, we're going to deal with that, the threat of legal fees and the, the whole idea of being sued and stuff. I get sued a lot and I always win. Never lost.
Well, as long as we're discussing it, I, I agree with you that this, I didn't think it was going to be discussed at this time. I remember the people that came to the fire hall and some of them are here tonight. I wanted to get out of the trail then and make it Wall Lake's trail connecting with Wixom and Commerce. And I was talked to that night by Supervisor Scott. We would meet, we would compromise. My concern was the depot. That if we, anybody pulls out of the trail, the depot belongs to Wall Lake and we're going to get stuck with it. I thought it was going to be part of the grant. It wasn't part of the grant. We were told, no, no depot in the grant. If either Wixom or Commerce pull out, or they both pull out, Wall Lake has another historical building to fix. Okay, we'll get it fixed and we will have a trail. It may not be a paved trail and I'm with Mr. Adwell. I've been on a lot of the trails in Michigan. I'm not sure that the trail has to be paved to be a quality trail. And that is my opinion. I don't know where the rest of the council's at. It seems like this seems to be a discussion right now. So if anybody wants to talk now, I guess it's open. If you don't, we'll discuss it when we get to the agenda item. Audience is well.
Why don't we adjust, why don't we address events at appropriate times?
All righty. Moving on then, city managers' report.
Please, Madam Mayor, council accepted departmental and divisional statistical report. I'll make a motion to receive and file both November and December two thousand eighteen statistical reports.
Okay, we have a motion, we have support. Roll call please.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Madam Mayor, we have some discussion about the budget workshop. I don't know that we need to add to it. Here's, here's what we need. We need to look at it and very shortly perhaps come back with the schedule of everybody's schedules. Do we really need to have a lot of discussion on it?
No, I passed out, I passed out the budget workshop schedule for everyone to take home. Look at your calendars. This isn't, um, you know, confirmed. If there's any discrepancies, we can alter it and then we can confirm everything at our February meeting.
Okay. That sounds fair. We can get back, getting back to you with the February meeting is fine.
Okay, Madam Mayor, I've got a couple more items. I would like to say that we're, we're making some awards. We're to honor the employees who did a good job this year. We split it up. The next meeting, the fire folks will be coming with their group, but we knew we're going to have a busy night. But we do have a couple. I would ask that, um, that Ms. Rogers come out and make a presentation to our public works employee of the year. And it's none other than Dan Ladd, who's sitting right in front. We won't make this a long presentation. You all know Dan. He's been here for a lot of years. He's our lead worker over there and he's getting stuff done. He's the guy that's working with the WRC. We have rehabbed what, four, five hydrants little this month. Uh, we found, uh, four or five first three days covered buried gate valves. So he's been leaning on that plus he's the one that, that makes things look right. So, so you read that, come on up if you've got your words or you have to add or something. We're going to make this.
So Dan has been employed with the city of Wall Lake since February of two thousand and is an employee of the public works division as part of the public service department. The city of Wall Lake, Michigan, by virtue of authority vested in the city manager and the laws of the state of Michigan, does hereby honor the, of public service employee of the year to Daniel Ladd for his service to the public service department for the year of two thousand eighteen. The city manager encourages all citizens to commemorate this occasion with appropriate activities and pay tribute to the honorary. We, the city council, have authorized and caused the corporate seal of the city to be affixed this fifteenth day of January in the year of our Lord two thousand and eighteen and of the establishment of the city of the state of Wall Lake, Michigan in its sixty-fifth year.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If the police chute is ready, uh, we're making another presentation for police officer of the year. I'm guessing he knows.
He does know. It's supposed to be his mag off.
You might have seen him before. He's been out front a couple of times as officer of the year. Tell us about that.
Uh, he is returning as the two thousand sixteen police officer of the year. So, um, there's a trend here. Officer Jacobs has been with us since, uh, May of two thousand fifteen. He boards a part-time police officer, worked hard and has established himself as a key member of our department. Uh, he's taken the lead on training our new officers and also with the past year, uh, our Alice instructor. I'm sure a lot of you are familiar with Alice, been training in the churches, the schools, and getting people prepared for the worst day that may come. So. So he does many, many things and he's never afraid to work. And we're very, very happy. And as of December, we'll probably say that he is a full-time police officer. And we may commit it to him. We may commit it to us. Thank you, Jacob.
We're going to see Officer Jacobs back at the next meeting. We're going to do some ceremonial swearing in. Since the chief touched on it, we were almost back to full staff the way we were before we did the layoffs. In terms of managing the budget, we're doing really well. We just replaced, we just hired two additional police officers. Officer Jacobs is one. We have another police officer, you'll see. She's been assigned to the executive bureau and she's doing all the background and work on all those folks that are applying for those licenses over here. The marijuana license. And we'll bring that to you at the next meeting. That'll be an interesting discussion. All right, I would like to call upon the Assistant City Manager to bring forward the Administrative Employee of the Year award. And that's Miranda Gross. Before you leave, I want to thank Miranda Gross. She's an intern at every position in the city, including her intern. She's a deputy city clerk, deputy treasurer. She interned with me, as you know. She attended Oakland Community College. She attends a university now. She's working on her certificate in human resources. She has attended also Central Michigan University. And in March, she will be certified as a, she will be the third certified deputy clerk in the office, certified to the state of Michigan. So we're really proud of her and that's why she's Officer of the Year. It really ties in with what's coming next. She was instrumental along with another young woman you're going to meet in a few minutes. The election was a big deal this year and it really went smooth. And Miranda Gross and our city clerk kind of love to do the best.
Miranda Gross was employed by the city of Wild Lake on April 11th, 2018 as a student intern. And now as a member of the administrative staff, serving as deputy clerk in the administrative services. The city of Wild Lake, Michigan, by virtue of authority vested in the city manager and the laws of the state of Michigan, does hereby award the honor of administrative employee of the year to Miranda Gross for the service of administrative services division for 2018. The city manager encourages all citizens to commemorate this occasion with appropriate activities paying tribute to the honorary. We, the city council, have authorized and caused the corporate seal of the city to be affixed this 15th day of January in the year of our Lord 2018 and of the establishment of the city of Wild Lake, Michigan in its 65th year.
Madam Mayor, there is an orchid amongst the roses in the spine. There's spied thorns over the police department. The orchid is our department head. Division Head Award of the Year. And that goes to your city clerk. Jennifer Stewart. As you know, Jennifer started, as most people know, Jennifer was here when I, she was the first employee I saw when I walked in the door literally nine years ago. And she introduced me to the mayor. And then she turned up even at my interview. She was the one that did that Saturday thing as she was filling in as the record clerk in the meeting. Because the city clerk was out of town. She started at the bottom. She was the junior administrative secretary. She went to the ranks. She graduated from the varsity. She did a 3.7 grade point average. She's just about disclosed her master's degree in public administration. We should expect that to happen in about three more months. And we'll tell you about that when she does get that. She's also been certified as a Michigan municipal clerk. Actually, she and I attended that first conference and that cert, the first certificate in Central Michigan way upstate. Somebody might know where that is, Central Michigan. I believe that some of the cities up there. You've been up there too. So she was, Jennifer went through all three of those programs. It's a three-year program. So she got certified as a Michigan municipal clerk. Subsequently, she's certified by the International Claws Association. So she is a certified municipal clerk. I forgot to mention, but Miranda and her both are going to be going after to finish up. But she's going to the Master's Clerk Association, Associate Magic. But the real reason she's here is not only does she run the shop in there and keep it going. And it's really not the most fun job in the world because our shop is different than most cities. A lot of folks come in and they're really angry all the time because things didn't quite go that well. She handles that pretty good for us. But she threw a good election and it was really her and Ms. Gross that got that done and kept it up. And of course, my Assistant City Manager helped out too. But those were the keys to the election. And one of the most important things with clerk's office is to do with the election. It's not just record keeping, but making sure the election goes smooth. And it went really pretty good because she was able to work with, work with the administrator. She's got that over her chest. So I'm proud to nominate her and appoint her as the current manager.
Sure. Jennifer Stewart was employed by the city of Wild Lake on August 15th, 2005 and is the city clerk in the department head in the administrative services. The city of Wild Lake, Michigan, by virtue of authority vested in the city manager and the laws of the state of Michigan, does hereby award the honor of the department head employee of the year to the city clerk Jennifer Stewart for her service to the city of Wild Lake for 2018. The city manager encourages all citizens to commemorate this occasion with appropriate activities paying tribute to the honorary. We, the city council, have authorized and caused the corporate seal of the city to be affixed this 15th day of January in the year of our Lord 2018 and of the establishment of the city of Wild Lake, Michigan in its 65th year.
Mayor, I'm finished with that. We'll move on. I would point out again that we're not finished with honoring those employees who have served the community and the city well. The fire department will be back in. We decided to break it up because we were just making a little bit of a crowd. You know, if you give a fireman an award, he's got his whole family and the team. They'll feel removed. But we expect another crowd to look at that thing and that'll be at the next meeting. But we've identified those people and we simply delay.
I'd just like to say I congratulate everyone. And I think you've made some very good choices. And here in Wild Lake, we've always been a pretty close family. And everybody knows everybody. And it's nice to see that they're appreciated and honored because they really deserve it. I wish we could give them all the same award, but we have to switch it to yours. So anyway, next on the agenda. Do you have any other correspondence for tonight? Okay. The correspondence on the agenda is where we have put Denise Hewitt. Denise, now is your time to come up to the podium. I'm not going to hold you to three minutes. But I would say 10 minutes should be sufficient time to state your case.
I'm condensing my life of 40 years, living next to a nightmare into three minutes. And it's not easy.
10 minutes.
Okay, thank you.
And we will put the timer on for 10 minutes.
Okay, I'll start. First of all, I'd like to thank the council for having an insight to hire a good city manager. I appreciate your phone call this week. That was very nice of you. I'm going to start by reading my letter to the editor. The rules concerning garage sales in Wild Lake. How would you like it if you were told you could only golf or watch football three times a year? That's how I feel about having garage sales. Wild Lake residents used to be allowed unlimited sales, but now are permitted just three a year, 45 days apart. In addition, sellers are only permitted four signs, one in their yard, and three elsewhere. I checked surrounding cities. Wickson, Noah, Commerce, Union Lake, et cetera. And believe me, I've done my homework. And none of them have any of these rules. The prejudice against garage sales came from someone who didn't like them, who has since died. Mayor Roberts suggested I get petitions supporting unlimited garage sales by standing in front of CVS. I collected more than 1,000 names, addresses, and phone numbers of Wild Lake residents who agree with me about unlimited garage sales. That's one in seven people among the local population, 7,089, according to the 2016 census. However, the city council ignored these petitions. The city's rules of only three sales per year prevented the flexibility that helps people in this depressed local economy. People have to downsize and relatives die. No one wants to hold onto items or give them away when they could make money themselves. When my boyfriend's mother died, I sold shoes, clothes, furniture, and a bedroom set that had sat in storage for 12 months at $100 a month, which was $1,200. Garage sales also bring revenue to the city. People from outside asked me for recommendations on places to eat. I suggested Casey's, Dave's, and Amy's Boon Kai, Hank's Bistro, the Beach Tiki Bar, formerly Bayside Grill, except for people like the town even wanted to buy my house. I am a taxpayer. Restrictions against garage sales are just nitpicking. The one person who objected to garage sales has since passed. So enough bureaucracy on red tape that hampers our freedom. Please let's go back to the old rules. Join me at the next city council meeting at 7:30 PM, January 15th, to let the old rules back of unlimited garage sales. Hope to see you there. This also started with a neighbor that had a personal vendetta against me. Nobody knew my neighbor like I did. I lived there 40 years. My parents owned half the houses in the neighborhood before I ever lived there. From day one, I couldn't have been sweeter to Oscar. I took him gifts. When he was in the hospital, I bought him a sweater. I brought him Christmas gifts. I brought them baked goods. I brought everybody around there gifts. Nobody, nobody was against Denise Hewitt. Oscar, since he has passed away, has told the gentleman here in the room, Randy, who is an excessive drunk in the neighborhood. And I hate to say that, but I'm going to say it like it is. I'm going to say it like it is. No, no, I'm going to say it like it is.
You're allowing bullying.
Denise?
They have to continue.
I will stop you now. You're going to continue that way.
Okay, well, what I'm saying is.
You're here to say why you want a garage sale.
Yes.
Not to talk about dead people or personalities of people.
So anyway.
Why should you have more than three garage sales?
First of all, you could do what you wanted, when you wanted. Everybody in my neighborhood has agendas. My neighbor two doors down just built a house. There's six cars in the driveway. There's more traffic two doors down. They have six kids with six cars parked in the street, but it's okay. Someone does mechanics up, but I don't care. People have boats. They have this, they have that. I am never in town. I'm doing 100 with a company. We're doing 130 trade shows a year. I make $400 a day doing trade shows. $500 a day with my new clients. Everybody hires me because I can sell. My boyfriend's mother died. My mother died. People died. They gave me clothes. My house is 800 square feet. I'm a shopper. As you can see, these are from every place all over the world. And I have more where this comes from. I'm a shopper. I have sales. I, no one said anything. My neighbor, when I didn't pay attention to him, this is when it all started. So then he got Jeff involved. So then I'd have a garage sale. I can't count 45 days. I came to the city trying to get directional signs to be put in the yard. And they said, you can't have directional signs. People weren't coming. There is no traffic whatsoever. You can videotape. Someone needs to come and videotape one of my sales. I brought my books up through the books, what I make. I came here and I asked for a rain date. There was a girl named Susan that was on the board. She followed me out of here one day and she said, I want to tell you something. I think it's horrible what this city is doing to you. She said, I went in there and said, give her a rain date. Let her put an arrow in the sign. Why are you picking on this girl? We've become best friends ever since then. She was campaigning to be on the board a month later. I voted for her. That was someone in my corner. Anyway, I feel, I run things in a very, first of all, when I had a one-car garage, my neighbor wasn't able to see what was going on. He was able to see what was going on. He put bushes up. He put fences up. I have a new neighbor now. He said, those are ridiculous. Why would he put them up? We got rid of those. We got rid of the bushes. I have two great neighbors right now. Nobody in my subdivision is even home when I have a sale. It's nine to five myself. They're all working. Everybody in this room right now, none of them live on my street. They live on a street, on a street over. And my neighbor told one of them who is here today, and he told me, and I will swear on a stack of bibles, that Oscar told him to continue this vendetta. I don't care who does what. Everybody has their own agenda. But why don't they just leave me alone? I am so low-key. And the reason my neighbor wasn't happy was because now I have a new garage. I'm in the garage. I hardly have anything there. I brought my paperwork of what I make. When I come home and it's raining, and I thought, you know, I want to be able to not have a sale. I don't have time to count it. And then when we were told that we could have garage sales 30 days, and I called the city. The mayor said, Jeff came to my house. He gave me a ticket for being 15 days early. I called the city. I said, can, I says, it was 45 days. I asked to see the minutes. They threw them away. What happened to the minutes? I called everybody that was on the board that were my friends that were there. And they said, it's 30 days. My boyfriend got up and said, you can't have a garage sale 45 days. It would be June, September, or December. So I had my garage sale 15 days early because I knew that it was 30 days. I called 11 people on the board. Nobody knew, including the other mayor. And so I said, Jeff, can I please just do a 15? No. He waited to after to call me back. I do a garage sale. He comes, there was a lady that was supposed to be here tonight. She just took him to court, $800. She sued him for harassment. And that's what I should have did. I'm out there. I call my, I have an ad in the paper. Jeff comes, he goes, you're 15 days early. But what are you talking about? It's 45 days. It's 30 days. He goes, no, I'm going to go to the city. And he goes, if I'm wrong, then I'm going to give you a ticket. He came back. I got a ticket. I fought it. It was $135 I had because I was 15 days early. I said, please make allowance. Punish me. Make me wait 100 days. But I've got the people here. He came back and wrote me a ticket. That's not fair. When I do a garage sale, I'm very, I'm very organized. I have a sale. You don't even know anybody that's there. Nobody, I have, nobody puts cones out anymore. The lady across the street has a lemonade stand. And what's going to happen is her kids are going to be hit by cars. I tell everybody, I go, I tell the little kids, they hang out in the ends of the street when there's no garage sale. And one day, and one of them is the lady who got up and spoke to the kids. I'm concerned more about them with the regular traffic we have. We've got people speeding through the neighborhood. My people that come are the regular people. I call people to let them know I have it. They're grateful. Some of people do this for a living. They make money. They resell. You know, they love my sales. I'm so low-key. My garage is so organized. And I don't run a garage sale business. I make $10 at some sales. I make $400 a day. I'll bring you, I brought my paychecks to show you what I make a week. So if I have a garage, that's my business. If you've got a trailer in your yard, that's your business. I want to go back to the old rules. I've lived here since I was five years old, 60-plus years. And nobody told me what to do until I had a neighbor that I didn't show an interest in that started all this. He used to, he took me to court for blowing leaves in his yard. I took a picture. The leaves fall. That had nothing to do with, and then I blow the leaves. The cops came. They said, he's cuckoo. I got a lawyer. I paid $400. They said, this should have never went to court. You know, I had a lunatic neighbor. He's now gone. My life is, there's no problems now. Everybody around me, the lady across the street, her husband died. We're best friends. I said to her the other day, do my garage sale? But she goes, no, it's not you at all. Nobody puts cones out anymore. The two guys next to me don't put cones out. And these people are following Oscar's words because he said, carry this on. And Randy will vouch for that because Randy is the one that told me that. And I have no reason to lie to you. I want to be able to do what I want, when I want. Make me wait 100 days. But I got the people here. He came back and wrote me a ticket. That's not fair. When I do a garage sale, I'm, I'm very, I'm, I'm very organized. I have a sale. You don't even know anybody's there. Nobody, I have, nobody puts cones out anymore. The lady across the street has a lemonade stand, and what's gonna happen is her kids are gonna be hit by cars. I, I tell everybody, I go, I tell the little kids, they hang out in the ends of the street when there's no garage sale. And one day, and one of them is the lady who got up and spoke to the kids. I'm concerned more about them with the regular traffic we have. We've got people speeding through the areas. My people that come are the regular people. There, I call people to let them know, have it. They're grateful. Some of people do this for a living. They make money. They resell, you know, they love my sales. I'm so low-key. My garage is so organized, and I don't run a garage sale business. I make $10 at some sales. I make $400 a day. I'll bring you, I brought my paychecks to show you what I make a week. So, if I have a garage, that's my business. If you've got a trailer in your yard, that's your business. I want to go back to the old rules. I've lived here since I was five years old, 60-plus years, and nobody told me what to do, until I had a neighbor that I didn't show an interest in that started all this. He used to, he took me to court for blowing leaves in his yard. I took a picture. The leaves fall. That had nothing to do with, and then I blow the leaves. The cops came, they said, he's cuckoo. I, I, I got a lawyer. I paid $400. They said, this should have never went to court. You know, I had a lunatic neighbor. He's now gone. My life is, is, there's no problems now. Everybody around me, the lady across the street, her husband died. We're best friends. I said to her the other day, do my garage sale, but she goes, no, it's not you at all. Nobody puts cones out anymore. The two guys next to me don't put cones out. And these people are, are following Oscar's words, because he said, carry this on. And Randy will vouch for that, because Randy is the one that told me that, and I have no reason to lie to you. I want to be able to do what I want, when I want. I don't have excessive garage. I don't want to do it every, I make no money. I have other things that I do. I have other businesses, and it's not garage sale. So, they need to leave me alone, because I have never called on anybody in my neighborhood. I don't care what anybody does. They all have their own agenda. Just leave me alone.